All right. So, um, today is September 11th, 2023, and it is 6 o'clock and I'm going to be calling in the committee of the whole meeting for the Rotten Board of Education to order. Um, and the first order of business before we go into the review of summer professional learning and it's really kind of good to see you guys continue. Um, but, uh, so that's the review of the August 21st meeting minutes. Um, and I will take a motion for acceptance of the meeting minutes. So moved, can I have a second please? Second, thank you, Jay. Is there any discussion on those meeting minutes? Liz?
Well, on the part where it's this discussion on school climate survey. Um, the one thing I didn't see here was that we were, we asked that we got all the responses. We had asked for that those responses from, you know, all of the comments and stuff would be sent to all of us later on and that's not recorded here.
Okay.
And we still haven't gotten them. So we wouldn't, you know, that was something that we would, we asked for and haven't, you know, didn't make the minutes and didn't make.
Ms. Joan, did you get the correction?
Yes.
Okay, great. And is there a way that we can get all the verbal comments sent to the board?
We only got, we only got the ones that you originally gave us. We asked for all of them.
Yes. They want all the comments, so we have to just go through them to make sure that we redact any names or anything.
Okay, I apologize, but I wasn't. Yeah, okay. That's no problem.
Thank you.
The people will name people and that's going to care.
No, that's not. That's not what we're looking for, what we're looking for.
All right, um, so any further discussion? So Ms. Joan, you're just going to add, um, the part that the board requested all comments to be sent to us through the climate survey?
That is correct.
Okay. It was good to hear your voice, ma'am.
Thank you, good to hear yours and everyone else.
Yay. Um, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the meeting minutes as corrected, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried.
Well, I'd like to get started just to orient people.
Okay.
I wanted to get started to orient you because I had written about the work in the summer several times in board notes, but I really took time in this last set of board notes to talk about the PLC, professional learning communities or book talks, and also all the other work. So I asked Joyce and Erica to help me put a list together on professional summer learning, so you could see the various kinds of summer learning. And this has all been really Phil's work and Erica and Paula.
I do have that available. Do you want me to share it while you discuss?
We could do that and it was actually embedded in the link, so I just didn't want you to miss it. There was also a curriculum page too that you'll be seeing again, um, when we bring it to curriculum. So we've talked about our students and their learning this summer and all the various camps and summer schools. Now we're going to talk tonight about our teachers and their learning, professional learning over the summer, and also all the curriculum work will come to the curriculum committee and then we're planning on also bringing it to the full COW, so we can share all the work. Did you want to say anything specifically? I mean, Wilson Training is really, um, a program that is used for our students with dyslexia and sometimes other learning disabilities as well. We have several teachers that are trained in, and I think I have about three or four going through level one training this year. So that's a really good thing to have. Usually we have to hire out to get someone that well-trained and many students need as much as an hour, four or five times a week of this particular reading program when it's an identified learning disability. So just letting you know that we continue to train our teachers this way and summertime sometimes is the best time to do it. But then a lot of their work really will be in during the school year and also rolled out with students. So they really use like a lab setting and, and do the instruction with students. So it really is a win-win. And then our National Math Science Initiative, we continue to work with them and that has been initiative that has trained many of our AP teachers. Social Studies, last year a big group was involved in the social studies. MIMC no longer does social studies, um, but they, they do because they are a Department of Defense-funded. They do all the STEM initiative, science, technology, engineering, math, and also ELA for like four English Language Arts curriculum. So we've had lots of people participate in that. Mentor training, that's kind of up your alley with the probably the team.
Yeah, I think that's, that's the team where we match, excuse me. Uh, teachers get, um, certified, I guess, to, to be mentors for new teachers going through the program. And so we're always encouraging more and more teachers to get involved with that. Um, that happened, uh, over the course of last year really and we're actually, you know, we, you know, we put the email out right around this time of year to get more people involved with that. So, uh, we're always looking to bring more people in there. Uh, Project Lead the Way is tied to those classes and, and anyone teaching those classes goes through the training, uh, so we can best.
Middle school and high school.
Middle school and high school. On all the rest, you can see, you know, some are individual training, some are larger, uh, group, but, um, I'm trying to look through.
A good point of order on two things.
Okay.
So as you go through, do you want us to have, um, uh, to announce our questions as, as you go through? Or do you want us to wait until you finish your table? And I also want to make sure that, um, specifically for all of us, but also for anyone who's like listening or watches this afterwards, to introduce the staff that are going to spend time with us. I would really like that.
And, and I'll lead right into them. So why don't we get through the table and then right at the bottom of the table, I'll introduce, um, our team here because we'll get into, you know, the work that they're.
All right.
So, you know, we had an outstanding training, you know, we continue to try to train as many staff as possible on the multi, on our multi-language learners and how to best, um, implement strategies in all of our classrooms. We had that just before school started, uh, this summer. Uh, the Project OBE Wet program, I think that's on the elementary level, again, you know, training for our teachers. Um, CFLM is our math, you know, math program. Um, as part of our work with them, they provide ongoing.
Hey, hey, Kim, Kim, can I ask you real quick? Can you explain what these programs are? Like Project OB Wet Program, what exactly is that program? And he skipped gem dash net slash Navy STEM Coalition. But can you give us a better explanation of what these programs are?
What's the explanation of the program?
Yeah, I can talk a little. And, and, okay, why don't we, we'll go around and introduce as they start, uh, speaking. I'll start to my right. If you want to just introduce yourself.
Hi, everybody. My name is Lisa Hernandez Corcoran and I've been helping spearhead the work with ELA and Humanities K5.
Especially with around the science of reading.
Yep.
As a consultant, so we're really very pleased to have her. We're no longer in partnership with TC, so we have Lisa here on board to help spearhead the work of the K3 and actually K5 literacy. So that's really worked out very well for us.
And she'll be speaking later to the, to the last one on the list there, the Shifting the Balance work for the summer. Next to her.
Sure. Ben Moon, um, recognize a lot of familiar faces here. I've been a C K for many years, a school specialist, but also supporting district-wide sciences STEM. That's actually by STEM. Uh, and Ben will speak to the, the Science Notebook, uh, Book Club that he did as well. And he can maybe take just a moment, uh, and I apologize, Ben, that we did skip that one. The, the Gemnet Navy STEM Coalition Summer Institute. Um, so partnership between Yukon, URI and the Navy. Um, it gets teachers in looking at some of the, the research, uh, that's going on between those partnerships. And teachers can bring that content knowledge back in the classroom, um, and create activities that, that are based on that research. Does that go through?
Did you all hear?
Yeah, because I'm watching the meeting here.
Yeah, it's here, it's just.
All right, good.
Did you need to push okay?
Next to Ben.
Okay, uh, my name's Kathy Wilson and I'm the NYPD Coordinator for the International Tech Area Program. And, uh, I've just been focusing on a lot of, um, new instructional, uh, challenges for our teachers and how we can answer those. And I'll be talking about building P K classrooms in a little bit.
Okay, and then we'll just continue going down the list. The Project Oceanography, uh, BE Wet Program, is that something, Ben, you can speak as well?
Yeah, so, uh, Project O has a big grant. This is the third year of their grant. Dames River was a first-year school. Catherine Kalnasky was a second-year school and I believe, um, teachers from Charles Barton are participating this year. It's a project-based learning, marine sciences, environmental science initiative. So teachers are trained in how to create action projects for students, uh, and then those action projects are implemented in classroom. And then as, as I was starting to explain, the CFLM units are the units of study that our, our math teachers use. Um, and the Kathy Bosno's, um, workshop offers, uh, some professional development throughout the summer on different units of study. Uh, so many of our teachers take advantage of that as these new units, uh, come into, uh, creation.
These are, if CFLM is context for learning mathematics, then they really are the problem-solving approach. So where they will do some practice work and some work that, um, in more of a workshop and with Dreambox, these are really the projects, like if they're doing building benches, they're actually measuring and building benches and using fractions and decimals accurately to do the measuring and, and they're building as they're doing it. So it's very engaging and it's, the landscapes are how kids take on the mathematics, like the stages. It's not a linear stage, but it's all the work that kids do to understand the theories of mathematics.
And it's really, it's really impressive to watch. It gives the kids time to make mistakes and problem solve and work together instead of just, you know, punching numbers into a calculator and trying to make a product. So, um, you know, our teachers, as they develop new units, you know, they get trained so they can, you know, instruct, you know, to the best of their ability. Uh, and then of course, the last three are, are the Book Clubs, the Science Book Club, the Building Thinking Classrooms, and the Shifting the Balance, which we're going to hear about in more details. Sorry.
So, um, so Liz, you had a question. I wanted to, I, I need to go in order. Sorry.
All right, you said, um, thank you, by the way, Kim. Um, Project Lead the Way, I see that the level was for nine through 12, but you did say middle school.
Yeah.
Okay, so that should be six through 12?
It could have been me dropping the ball, I don't know, but there was, there was two teachers that were actually trained in, in six courses this summer. So I don't know why that's not on the list, but we had two.
Two middle school teachers?
Yes.
Not, not ninth and 10th, but middle school.
Middle school, sixth, seventh, eighth.
So I was kind of wondering.
Yeah.
Okay, so Project Lead the Way.
It could have been the one was from a high school and then there were two others from the middle school, I'll bet.
So I can update that.
Yes.
Hi, Mrs. James. Do you have a question? Do we have? Oh, you don't, I need to.
You do, it's in your board notes. It was, I said I put, I put, I put, um, a couple of forms in, um, the board pack, but I wanted to write about it in board notes. So I gave the, the written understanding of these professional groups and that's what they're going to be sharing with you, but you do have it.
Okay. Yeah. You have that.
You do have this too, but it's all, yeah, it's all in the board notes. Stop my shirt. I even think I sent Joyce, Joyce sent you an email specifically to say, read your board notes because they have this whole section and it has information for you for tonight.
I think it was in, I, I can't access. Anyway.
I do a knowing when it's me. I know how to get to.
Before we get to the, uh, to the in-depth presentation of our book club, I just wanted to share, this was another part of our, you know, we like to refer to it as professional development as well, it's a curriculum, I mean, um, these are all, and this actually dates back to, uh, the spring as well. Uh, and as you can see, um, a lot of it, you know, we like to consider our, our curriculum, uh, a living document, you know, where we're consistently updating it and, and we have a lot of teachers who are really, really, really into putting in the work to make sure that it's up, as up-to-date as possible. Um, the three at the top are the new classes, these have gone before our, you know, up-boarded end curriculum. I, they still, the final, uh, Naval Sciences has gone through, you, you should all remember that one. The ASL four and the topics in 20th Century will be upcoming this fall, um, just to review the, the final documents. Everything else are just modifications and updates of which we want the board to be informed upon. It doesn't really require approval necessarily, but, um, you know, and as you can see, we're really, uh, you know, across all areas of, of, uh, all subject areas. And it's just an ongoing, and, and the, the work at the elementary, again, you'll hear some of that, uh, talk tonight.
When we bring it back to, we want to show you, anybody with a, um, rotten address can look at, you know, all the lesson planning too that goes on. We, when we put it for publication to the public, you see the map, the curriculum map that we designed, but then some of the details in the planning and certainly in the assessment don't go out to the public. So that is showcased in our curriculum site. And certainly when we bring it to the Board of Ed Curriculum Committee, we'll show you again where that is and all the details. It's an amazing thing. It's an amazing piece of work. And even for the new rollout of phonics that Lisa has worked so diligently with, uh, literacy team and all of the staff, they almost have slides to go on. They also have a manual, but they are able to use it as a teaching tool as well. So they're really happy about that. Very in-depth. Different than what I had going up.
So when you say, like, which high school, is it world language modification? Are you talking about French, Spanish, Latin, and ASL? Or it's, so it's.
Spanish and ASL.
Oh, whatever. Got, got it, okay. But it's just because it just says world language.
Yeah, it, it is all of them and, and you can see it's also listed in the elementary as well. As you know, you know, we're beginning that program this year and so everything sort of shifted down, so it required some modifications along the way.
I just, I just, it threw me when you just said world language, because we usually address it as a specific.
Yeah, I could, I could qualify it in preference.
They're keeping the curriculum very similar, but the language changes. So they're trying to be really uniform in their delivery for that seal of by literacy to get kids ready. So, um, and that's part of Leah's work in this grant, working with them. Unfortunately, she speaks both languages still.
Yeah, but I can add that to the document.
It just makes it clear.
And next will be to get into the work that was accomplished with our book studies. And we are going to start with our work on shifting the balance and so I'll let.
Great, so, um, as many of you know, the state of Connecticut passed the Right to Read legislation, which is asking school districts across Connecticut to reevaluate their curriculum to ensure that they have, uh, research-based practices in ELA. And so one of the things that we wanted to do was go right to the source and help our teachers understand current reading research as much as possible. Last spring, um, Susan bought everybody the book, Shifting the Balance. And then over the summer, uh, we invited teachers and, um, interventionists and some special educators to join us for a book club. So if you want me to just do that?
Okay.
You don't mind? I do. Just saying. There we go. So there were in fact, um, 30 participants. I know that it said 35 on the other documents. Some of the, um, Central Office Special Education staff wanted to participate so that they could be kept in the loop as well, which was lovely. Um, we had a variety of different educators across the district.
Did you add Fiona?
Um, okay, there's two more, so let's just round it right up to 40. Um, and what's really fantastic about this book, Shifting the Balance, is that it is current reading research and the application of it. Um, when I first read the book, uh, I think it was like a year and a half or two years ago, it became instantly my favorite because of how teacher-friendly and user-friendly it was. So it's not over-innated when it comes to like tiny bits of research and the margin of error. It's very much, here is a misinterpretation or misunderstanding that we've had in the world of education. Here is now what current reading research says and how to apply it. So there have been, um, six shifts that were talked about within, um, this book. The first shift is rethinking reading comprehension and how it begins. And what we know now based on research is that reading comprehension begins way before children come to school. It begins with language and experiences with language. But what that means for us in school is that we can then bring more language into the classroom through powerful pre-planned interactive read-alikes where we engage kids in the thinking and the talking work that they need in order to be able to hear, understand, and then also be able to use that when they're reading and comprehending. The second shift is to recommit to phonemic awareness instruction. So phonemic awareness instruction is the understanding that words are made up by individual phonemes or the smallest unit of sound. So if the word is cat, our kids need to be able to understand that that word is made up of three phonemes or three sounds. Cat. And then they need to be able to blend that together to read cat in order to write and spell. They need to be able to segment that and say cat. So they can hear those individual sounds. So we have also started doing a lot when it comes to that foundational sound work because phonemic awareness is actually an indicator of future reading and writing success. The third shift was to reimagine ways that we teach phonics instruction. So when we think a little bit about our phonemic awareness being the sound work, we then need to look at phonics as adding the letters and the spelling patterns to those sounds. We know that phonics needs to have a clear scope and sequence that builds from the easiest concept to the much more complex concept. Our scope and sequence starts with the letters of the alphabet and it goes all the way to multi-syllabic words, studying, um, roots, then prefixes and suffixes as well. So we have a scope and sequence that is based on research. In addition to that, we also know that children need us to be explicit in our teaching. So when we're explicit in our teaching, we're explaining the letter-sound connection. We're explaining how to use it as a reader and how to use it as a writer. And we're embedding those into our phonics as well. The next shift, shift four, was revising how we teach high-frequency words. So high-frequency words are a group of words that show up a lot in children's literature. And so what we know is that if we teach kids those words and help them learn to read them quickly and instantly, that frees up their mental work to decode trickier words and to comprehend what they're reading. However, historically speaking, um, many people have taught high-frequency words by flashcards, thinking that you need to memorize them. And so we literally flash-carding our kids with all of the high-frequency words. What we now know is that does not work. So what we need to do is go back to shift two and shift three. So if we're teaching high-frequency words, we need to make sure that kids are able to isolate the sounds in the words and then connect the spelling to those sounds. So that then the word can be locked in their sightword memory bank after multiple exposures and practice. That's even true for words that are irregular, like the word set. We don't want kids just to memorize that word. We want kids to understand that set is made up of three phonemes. And the first and the last are very regular phonemes. The middle, we tell them that F in this word is a I, which is irregular and we tell them that it is not a normal spelling pattern, but they need to be able to connect the sound to symbol in order for them to build that sightword memory bank. The fifth shift is reimagining ways we use MSP, um, the three cueing system. This basically comes down to what do we do as teachers when children are reading and they come to a word that they don't know? And what we need to do according to research is keep their eyes on the word. Have them looking at the word and looking at the letters and parts of the word to make the sounds that they know are connected to those spelling patterns across the word. Blend those sounds together, then reread the sentence, thinking, does the word that I just sounded out make sense with what I'm reading? We are no longer at all asking kids to look at pictures to figure out words. We need to drive their eyes to the letters and sounds and make sure that they're practicing what they know about phonics.
And this is one of the things that the parents had come to us, that was really a concern out of all four parents that came to us, that came to me. That was their concern.
Yep.
And not that kids don't look at pictures and get deeper meaning even in what the story is about, but they definitely, the look, the look for in that cueing system is start with the word and the letters.
Yeah. And the final shift was reconsidering text for our children. And what we want to reconsider is the types of text that we put in front of our kids. When our kids are learning different phonics and spelling patterns, we want to start using what we call controlled texts or decodable texts. If kids are learning about short vowel A spelling patterns and one of the texts that we want to put in front of them is a text that has them practice with a lot of short vowel A words in that text. So what you'll notice a lot in classrooms now is teachers have mu- many more decodable texts, those controlled texts to get kids to practice their phonics transfer so that they can eventually go into a less controlled text where they have to orchestrate more. So we have added quite a few different decodable texts to our classroom libraries and our instruction.
And they're even better than they were in the day.
Oh, they are so much, but there's actually a storyline.
They really are too.
Yeah.
And that Michael Ray Grant that worked with us a few years ago was an author of some of them, so we're excited about that.
So the great thing about the work that we've been doing in phonics and creating a scope and sequence for our teachers is finding a resource that will help them be systematic and explicit with their instructions. What we found is UFLI Foundation is the resource that helps us cover four of those different shifts. So I go back to the purpose of Shifting the Balance. This was an opportunity to give our teachers the why. Not just the what we're going to do for phonics, not just the how we do it, but the understanding about why we do what we do and why it's so important.
And that was another, um, another resource that a lot of parents were seeing and we were seeing. And we had had a few teachers who just got their degree as reading consultants who had been through recent training that brought it to our attention. And actually, we're piloting some of these things because Lisa was here working with them and we were listening to them and we were saying, we need to be shifting things even before we got to Shifting the Balance and we needed to do things to meet the needs of the kids in front of us. And the teachers really drove, drove the thinking and we kind of supported them. And it was a very productive year.
I'm going to recognize Rita and Ben, Liz.
Um, I don't, I don't think, um, you could see me, but I think you can hear me, correct?
Yeah, we can see you.
You want to put down the slide?
Oh, you can see me too?
We'll stop. We can see you better.
Thank you. Um, my question is, since this shift is taking place this year, what are we going to do for our students that, um, weren't taught this way? You know, now going forward, yes, but how are we going to backtrack and help our students to learn to read correctly? Because we weren't doing that in the past. So how, what is, what is happening to help those students that? So how, what is, what is happening to help those students that, you know, were in grades K one, two previously?
So I think that's a great question. And we've talked about ways to build a foundational gap. One of the ways we're doing that is we are right now rolling out phonics for third grade and having them very closely look at what their kids can do and what their kids need next and use the resources that we have created in order to support that instruction. Additionally, we are, we already talked about DIBELS screeners.
I've shared with them a little bit, but we can.
Is it okay if I share it? Okay. So another state of Connecticut mandate is that we use a universal screener that is approved by the state. And so what we've done is we've taken a look at the universal screeners that they recommended, and the one that works best for our district is DIBELS. So that universal screener is going to be administered to all of our K three students and our students that are receiving intervention in grades four and five. That not only is a screener that lets us know student strengths and next steps, but that also has clearly defined, research-based, small groups that can be done specifically to meet the needs of where each child is. Our interventionists have also been participating in the learning of what we've been doing for our phonics in the classroom so that they can look also at this UFLI Foundation's resource and use parts of it in their small groups for reteaching and having kids practice again. And then additionally, when I think about the, back to the universal screeners, special education is also going to be using that screener to help them find small groups to teach into for their own students. So yes, you're right, there are some gaps and we are going to be working to fill those gaps this year.
And this DIBELS, we've always done it by hand and we have always taught phonics, but I think we're going to do it even better. With this comprehensive scope and sequence, it's really a model curriculum that's been designed by Groton, K three. But this tool that we're going to use is called Amplify, M-class, and it's a digital online process that you can actually add the data in and it does the charts and graphs, and then it gives the teacher information on what kinds of intervention the child may do, need, based on the data that we receive. So it gives that added intervention piece, which is going to be so critical to the classroom teacher because it's a core instructional tool and, you know, assessment, and also to our interventionists in, you know, SRBI or, you know, multi-tiered levels of support and also our special educators.
Okay, I just have one more question, Susan. So we're no longer paying any money to Lucy, Lucy Cockens and her?
No, we aren't. No, I'm using the funds from the grant to have Lisa here in our district, which is awesome.
Okay, thank you. Liz?
Just a quick one. You had the five, six shifts. One of the shifts, six shift five, says reinventing the ways we use MSV. What's MSV?
Okay, so it was a cuing system that helps teachers think a little bit about analyzing what kids do when they come to a word that they don't know. Years ago, what you would do is analyze what a child was doing, looking at first, meaning. Was the child, was this error, an error when the child was trying to use meaning to figure out the word? Okay, so that was the first one. The second one is syntax or structure, basically the grammar of the language, right? So is this error an error that was syntactically accurate even though the word is incorrect? So it was a noun for noun or a verb for a verb, right? And there were tenses. Then the last one was V, which stands for Visual Graph phonics, which basically means letters and sounds. Was the child using letters and sounds to figure out the word? If they were, which spelling patterns? So what happened is when you look at MSV and you look at the positioning of those cuing systems, a lot of educators focus on meaning. Oh, the word is incorrect, but they were using their meaning. So they might have read the word pony instead of horse, but they were like, oh, but they were using meaning to read that word. Okay, so it's not too bad. But what we started finding in terms of research is that when a child becomes overly reliant on meaning and is just guessing out the word because of the pictures or meaning, they are not using their letters and sounds. What happens is the more complex the texts get, the less support you're getting from pictures and meaning and our kids crumble.
Yep.
So now we're rethinking the way we analyze the errors that children, that children make when they're reading by starting with the phonics, the letters and sounds, and what can we do to support our kids and making sure they know the sounds in those words to help them read.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate that.
Sure. Um, Beth?
Thank you, Kim. Years ago, Deb West used to do parent workshops. Are we planning on doing any workshops for parents to help them, so they're able to help their students with this phonics stuff?
Absolutely. You're reading our minds. That had, you know, we were doing that really prior to COVID and we started back again last year with some STEM work and some math work and, you know, cookies in pajamas and reading, read alouds. But I think you're absolutely spot on to really, we've talked about ways that we can share with parents how to really support their kids, even with little bookmarks that might have some of these strategies for parents to use, but also having, you know, evenings where they can come out and with their children and learn some techniques. And maybe there, there are ways that we can go into some of the neighborhoods too after school, you know? We've talked to, the Branford Manor has the community center now and we've had teachers in the past who've done that, Navy Housing, you know, we, we want to be able to bring the information to them and also provide it in the schools with some fun times for the kids as well. When kids come out to things and want to be there after hours, parents come with them. We see that in all our buildings.
Okay, that's good, Susan. I'm glad to hear that because I really think that's a key part of teaching any student anything, that if you get the parents involved, that really helps the students.
Right. Hi, neighbor. I've even contacted Scholastic. They have a family engagement program where they, you know, have book sets for, for parents. And through some of our grants, we might be able to provide resources to give them books for home.
Thank you, Susan.
Yes.
I'm going to recognize Dean and Ben.
In terms of the phonics, the new phonics curriculum? So we're already starting that process right now with professional learning communities. I will be meeting with every grade level team in kindergarten, first and second and third grade once a month. What we're doing is they are bringing a sentence dictation. There is a lot of research that shows if children can use their spelling patterns to write a sentence that correlates with a deep understanding of that phonics feature that they can use it in their reading as well. And so we've already actually started this work. This past week I was at NEI working with their second grade team. They brought a sentence dictation. We analyzed the sentence dictation for strengths and next steps, next steps whole class, next up small groups. So that's actually already in the works. I'm glad that you asked that because we need to be able to keep up with how is it, how is this going? How are our kids transferring this into reading and into writing?
And using this DIBELS data to guide instruction? So, you know, Lisa will support that. The specialist will be supporting teachers in the classroom and in the data meetings as well as the principal. So we're all going to have our eyes peeled on the data and I'll be sharing with the board too what we're finding. Everywhere.
Hey, Kim, can you give Dean a microphone, Kim? Because we can't hear him.
You need to repeat that. That was really good pearls of wisdom, but she couldn't hear you. There you go. That's as far as you can go, bud. You just have to speak up. Use your lawyer voice.
I don't have a lawyer voice. Can you hear me now, Ben?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you, Dean.
All right, sure. Where to begin? Uh, I was just saying that reading and writing is the foundation of everything else that we do in school and I would expect that there should be improvements downstream from just the grade levels that we're dealing with here. I expect, but quote, test scores or whatever evaluation scores, assessments, that those numbers or however we qualify or quantify will rise, right? Okay.
Before I retire.
Long before you retire.
Long before.
Jay?
Is there still a place in this whole structured process of now? Are we still determining what level?
So I think it's interesting, is an interesting question to ask because we, when we think about Fontes and Pinnell as an assessment to see what our kids are doing as readers, we need to look at that information carefully, but understanding it's not the end all and the end all. So one thing that we're trying to do in kindergarten in particular is that we are not going to be doing Fontes and Pinnell at the end of kindergarten because those texts don't actually show us what kids can do when it comes to transferring their phonics. What we are going to do is have kids read a more controlled text with the phonics features that they've learned and teachers are going to assess how kids are doing when it comes to transferring what they know about decoding as well as their high-frequency words. When, when you look at Fontes and Pinnell in terms of a level, I personally feel that too much emphasis is placed on that one assessment across the United States, not just in Groton. So what we have been working on as a literacy team is multi-layered assessments so that we think about, well, let's have kids read a list of phonics features, like a list of words with a certain phonics feature. Can they read these words? Let's have them spell some words in a sentence dictation. Because we need to be able to look at many layers of the reader, I often say that an S and P or a Fontes and Pinnell assessment is one photograph in the photo album of our readers. So we need to look at many different assessments in order to truly say what kids are doing really well and what are some next steps. It has a place right now, but it is not our central focus.
And in terms of this new.
UFLI.
UFLI, yep.
So. University of Florida.
The grant funding.
We had our BESR funding, we just put in for two, close to $100,000, um, reading, right to read.
Yep.
Brants, we should be hearing pretty soon about that. And that has some continued, I think, books in that. Lisa really found that you need to use these manipulative, some of you might remember on your refrigerator, the A's and C's and one, two, threes. Well, they're back again. They never left, but really in this program, having the whiteboards and having those for every child was necessary. And Lisa did not want our teachers, and I did not want our teachers, and neither did Phil, to have to cut and paste and make these things up. It takes way too much of their time. So we had them made, we found a, you looked all over, found someone who would make them, and we also charged that to our BESR and then right to read so that every child now, A through two, has these magnetic whiteboards with their letters and they'll be using that during their instruction, either one-to-one, small group, however.
And they're definitely using it whole class.
And whole class. So that, you know, we're modeling that. And that was a big ingredient to this too. And it's not something we have never done, certainly done and used it, but now it's really going to be more systematically used.
So UFLI is a, is a curriculum, but it's also a set of books?
So UFLI is a resource that has lessons that are, it's lessons for every phonics feature. And so the lessons are in the manual. It also has slides that are the visuals that go along with the lessons so that teachers are able to follow the lesson, have the clear and explicit language to help describe what the phonics feature is and how you use it, and the visuals are right there. And a part of that is what Susan was saying, there is a part of the lesson that is kids building these words on their magnetic whiteboards. And so that they are practicing the spelling and the building of those words and manipulating letters and sounds.
And it's important that our interventionists and our special educators use that common language too, because they might not be teaching the core lesson, but they're going to have to do the more, the additional piece if they aren't really grasping the first time around.
I'm going to recognize Rita.
Yes. If we're not going to be using the Fontes and Pinnell, will the teachers have to administer these tests individually to the students? How, how will that happen?
So they, their, Fontes and Pinnell is still a part of their assessment. The, the assessments in reading for the ones that I was talking about, listening to kids read a phonics-based controlled text are one-on-one. They're administered very similarly to a Fontes and Pinnell. The difference is the text.
And we'll use that for the primary grades.
For kindergarten.
For kindergarten and maybe beginning of first grade, we'll have to.
Well, for, for teachers to have the time to do that, are there aides in the classroom that could help with that? I mean, you know, when there are other, you know, maybe 16 or 15 other little children sitting.
Principal always supports the assessment cycle and with the DIBELS, we're actually having a SWAT team, we call it, all of our interventionists and special, you know, to go in and, and do all the assessments for the kids and gather the data. So the teachers don't have to do that. That's another level of training that our interventionists have all had. And they'll be, train the trainer, they'll train the special educators and the tutors, and then eventually our teachers will all have that training. They've had it before, but just with this new M-class digital version, we'll have to, you know, get them up to speed, but we're going to take that off their plate.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Dean?
What do we do? I'll get close to Mike. I think maybe in the earlier grades, the differences among children, it could be just native talent, it could be that perhaps in the household, reading was started early, so a lot of kids come even to pre-K already, experiencing a book and experiencing reading. One of my children, I'm a degree, by age two was conversant in the alphabet and it supplies his matrix of listening. What do we do with the kids who are ahead of their peers? How do we manage that? Like I said, I think that the differences among children might be more noticeable in these earlier grades. They might even out as they go through their school careers, but some geniuses won't be geniuses. What do we do with the kids that are, they've, they've done everything you're showing, they got it all.
That's another good question.
So remember that the phonics curriculum and instruction that we have right now with the UFLI resource is what we call tier one whole class instruction. And by law, all children require that instruction. That is about a 20-minute block in their day. Phonics is in service of reading and writing. So that means there's no time in that explicit instruction for small groups. But where there is time for small groups is when they're doing their readers workshop and their writers workshop. Therefore, based on the data, the teachers will be pulling small groups to support kids that might need to go beyond where they are in terms of the phonics tier one or might need some additional support within small groups during reading as well as in writing. So that's where the differentiation will happen.
And that's a bigger block of time. Like, you know, that's like an hour.
It's like about 45.
I, I know the board was, was shared a New York Times article on the Lucy Cockens and I think that the Fontes sent them to, so there, the article and this conversation, I think is very timely. So I think it's, and also, as I'm sure, you know, we, we received a lot of information from parents and from people about. we received a lot of information from parents and from people about um, the K through 3 reading program and the state candidate. So we've been, the board has been thinking a lot about the K through 3 reading program for a while. So thank you very much for sharing that. Any further questions for her so that we can move on to other staff members that we have? But it's your excitement and your joy um.
And her knowledge.
It's valuable. Um, and I would just really appreciate, um, because this is a phenomenal district with phenomenal people and um, welcome aboard.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
We know talent.
Okay, we're gonna move on to our math with Captain Wilson.
Okay, so I'll try to talk loud, Beth, so you can hear me. Um, so as the NYPD coordinator, I've been asked many times, like, what does, if you're, if I'm a teacher and I'm an NYPD teacher, what do I have to do to change my instruction to be NYPD? And you know, I could give them, you know, uh, instructions like, oh, it's all student-centered, you're the facilitator, it's inquiry-based, it's problem-solving, it's collaboration. But it wasn't until I read this book um, that I could see it in the math classroom. And this is a gentleman who's been researching for fifteen years, and he came up with fourteen different instructional practices that um, get our students engaged, because you're not learning if you're not engaged. You can see that with adults, you can see it with children. You're not learning if you're picking up your phone and you're off to something else, you're not engaged. Um, so uh, I went to a workshop that he gave in Hartford and uh, Phil and also Caitlin Crowley, who's uh, curriculum coordinator for math, went to it also. And I think I can speak for all of us that we were very impressed. It was um, so engaging that we were working on a math problem for an hour and didn't realize the hour had gone by. Um, he has broken it down into uh, toolkits. So you have the first toolkit and you can um, stay in that realm as long as you feel you need to with your students. But then you can move on to the second toolkit that adds other practices. And then the final toolkit that goes into like assessment, beyond the formative assessment, um, grading, standardized grading. And then um, just really good engaging practices.
Every, very NYPD-ish.
It's so NYPD. It's fine, you know, I finally could really be specific about it. Um, he, the book club that we had this summer consisted of twenty-two teachers. And I just put it out to six through twelve because um, I think the elementary school teachers were getting a lot of, you know, inundated with a lot of stuff going on, but we still had two math coaches that came anyway. So that was great. And then um, uh, we had two high school teachers and then the rest were middle school teachers and math interventionists. We had one English Language Arts teacher because she, I can see this type of engaging practice moving across the disciplines. And I am gonna attend a workshop at the end of November for that, uh, how it can move across disciplines. But um, basically in the first toolkit that they're implementing right now, um, can you click that? I think I have it up there. Uh, next one. Okay, so the first toolkit, which they're implementing now, and they probably won't move on until past the end of the first semester. They, when the students come in, they are um, put in random groups of three, and it's random every single time.
They pick a card.
They take a, yeah, a card or a, you know, uh, they, most of the time, the teacher is using playing cards right now. And they're once they get their card, they go over to a uh, vertical erasable surface. We have whitebooks that Susan purchased for the teachers that don't have enough uh, dry erase boards.
Well, we found extra ones around the district.
We're gonna get those put up too, it's gonna be great. So the students do all of their work visibly on the board. The teacher walks around and she gives them non-curricular thinking tasks to begin with. For the last two weeks, they've been non-curricular. There's still math, but they're not necessarily in the curriculum. They're getting kids to start thinking and using what they've learned in the past and talking about it and solving problems in like front of everybody. And so far, it's been amazing. I've been into seven different classes where the teachers are using them. I hear kids talking math for a half hour, forty-five minutes. I don't even think you could talk about math that long. You know, I mean, it's really, really, really good. And um, and the teachers are getting excited too, because the kids are engaged. There's not one kid that goes back and sits down and picks up his phone. There's not one kid that um, you know, is misbehaving and running around or anything weird, just because they're standing and they all have to collaborate to come up with the answer.
And they're cheering at the end. I wrote about it in board notes. I took pictures. We, it was like so exciting because this is what I've been doing since I was a teacher.
Right.
This is the kind of work that I had been doing. And, and as the math coordinator in New Haven, and I was going classroom to classroom with handshake problems and horse trade problems and getting kids to, you know, justify their answers. And this is really what the thinking is. And I just was so thrilled when I read the book and I heard about Peter Lilandall, and I can say his name now.
Lilandall.
So.
I'm gonna recognize Beth, is that gonna be okay?
Oh, sure.
Beth?
Thank you, Kim. Um, Kathy, can you give me an example of non-curricular?
Non-curricular tasks would still be math, but they might break it down into, um, if you give the kids ten numbers, um, one through ten, and you give them four operations, subtraction, addition, multiplication, and division. And then you give them five answers. They have to come up with the answers, they have to come up with the, with the expression for the answer. And they can only use those four operations plus one extra, and they can't repeat a number. So the kids stand there and they look at you for a few minutes, but then they go, oh, all right, all right, all right. And they start to, we have to do the ones that are over twenty because that has to be multiplication, you know, and they start breaking it down. And it's, it's an amazing thing to watch.
It's a lot of mental math.
Yeah.
And it's tap, it's tricky and it's thoughtful. And you know, sometimes they'll even do card games or they'll find things that are really intriguing for the kids to try out.
Each time each group is successful, they get the next level up.
Right.
Of numbers. So, so everybody continues to work, even if others are taking a little bit longer. Um, and then, you know, and they take the time, sometimes they look around and that's okay.
Yep.
You know, it's not copying, but they kind of look.
They share information.
Or I saw the teacher say, if you need an idea, go phone a friend, go to the next group over. And so then they discussing it again. So it's really justifying their, their answers and really trying to figure it out together.
It's really fun to watch. So yeah, I don't know if I, I didn't, I, I got pictures of kids doing it, I think, in the next one. So I went to Anna Stow's room. And she's kind of the person that hides her excitement, but she wasn't hiding it today.
Hiding it when I was in there. She was like jumping up and down.
And um.
Excited.
She was doing um, like a riddle kind of thing with them to get, basically the idea is to get kids up and thinking right away. In the very beginning of class, you take attendance and then like you do the divvy up the cards and you get them going. Because as soon as you sit down and you sit behind your desk, kids would get lost. They'd become anonymous. They could hide their phones under the desk and text each other. There was just, uh, they needed to just get moving. They needed to get moving. And um, I had the opportunity to go to uh, Guilford, uh, Baldwin Middle School in Guilford. And it was a classroom of fifth graders that had seventy-five minutes of math. They had just spent four days taking the S-Back tests. And they went to math class and she got them right into a task and they worked for seventy-five minutes after S-Backs. I mean, I would have been like, why aren't we going out for recess? You know, but they were great. And I said, did you see any difference in how they um, performed? I know they didn't have the scores yet, but how did they perform taking the test? And one of the teachers said, they actually took longer to try and solve the problem.
Yeah.
Because they were used to being told, solve the problem, you can do this, you know? And again, it's like a video game. You start out at a basic level and you make them successful for like, you know, five, six levels. And then all of a sudden, that's when you start getting harder. But they're confident. I could solve this, I could do this. I'll just keep, I'll just keep trying. So their resilience actually went up. And when you think about what we really value in teaching our students, resilience is a huge thing. And error correction and, you know, resilience perseverance, you know, working your way through a problem-solving, critical thinking. This is really what we want our students to do. They'll eventually get the math, but we want them to do these inherent values.
Our ATL skills.
And those are our ATL skills. They're our learner profile, portrait of a graduate. So.
Yeah.
It's really cool. And as, I mean, I'll, I'll be happy to come back as they start moving to the other practices. You know, I, I can only speak to the first toolkit right now. Um, but as they start moving to the other practices, I'd love to come back and tell you how it's going because I, I think it's gonna be phenomenal. There's another um, picture of kids. That's, this is Allison Harvey's, uh, honors Algebra II class. And they were into it too.
Yeah, and I was able to observe the teaching crowd.
And the problems with, the curricular problems will look like something that we might have gotten on a worksheet chip. A bazillion of them, and we had to solve them. And this way, we're doing one at a time and they might be more in-depth, or they might have words around it and be problem-solving. But, you know, they really solve it. They really attack it. And the teacher doesn't necessarily show them a pattern to solve it. The teacher's job is to assess the kids' thinking about the problem. And kids will come up with, as many kids in the classroom, you might see ways of solving the problem. And then you talk about the efficiency, the accuracy of solving the problem. You look for other things too. And kids discuss this. Well, this model seemed to work best because, you know, it took me two steps instead of five, and I really understood it.
Yeah, they consolidate the learning at the end of the lesson. Also, I saw in Allison Harvey's class, as she was walking around and like, she would drop a little hint here, a little hint there in case, you know, they were, they were struggling. Um, but she also noticed, she was like, oh, we're having trouble with proportions here. This is something you should already have. So in her head, she's going, this is something I've gotta reteach. So I thought it was, you know, really cool way, formatively assessing all the kids in the class as she's walking around.
This is great. Beth?
Thank you. Um, I like this because it's not only teaching our students how to think, but it's also teaching them to work together as a team and giving them some social skills too. So um, this sounds, this is very good. Do they do this in the beginning of the class or at the end of the class, or is this the class lesson?
Right now, the teachers vary. Um, the book actually wants them, in toolkit number two, wants them to do the task at the beginning of class. So they're immediately getting up, working. But the teachers still like, you know, they're given homework and they wanna go over the homework and they wanna kind of, you know, get the kids um, focused on, you know, the fact that they're in math class now. And they, they're not used to it yet. But uh, I think we'll be seeing pretty soon that they'll be like, the kid will come in the classroom, they'll be given their card, they'll be grouped, and then they'll be given their task and then they'll move on. Um, the one thing that Peter Lilandall gets away from is mimicking. He doesn't believe that you can learn math by mimicking it. And so uh, in the past, the teacher has gotten up, putting up a.
Show and tell method.
Yes, show, putting up a problem, solving it for them, saying, do yours now. And a lot of kids will just, you know, pretend they, pretend that they're working on it or go get a pencil or go to the bathroom. Then they come back and they know the teacher's gonna show them how to do it now. And so in their notebooks, they have everything that the teacher showed them, but they didn't do any of the learning themselves. So this gets away from that.
This almost reminds me of what um, Sabana Panucci used to do. And I forget, she used to have um, books. And every day, I forget the name of the books, and every day she would give the students like uh, challenging work to do. And it didn't take long, maybe fifteen, twenty minutes. And she had one for math, one for science, one for language arts. And it just gets them thinking and, you know, before class starts. So this is great. Thank you, Kathy.
I'll have to ask her about it.
Yeah, I have to get the name of it, but ask her. Cause she gave me the books to use at the prison, and I used to do it with my students.
Dean?
The reference to Algebra II reminds me of something that I heard some years ago. Do we teach Algebra II to anybody in the middle school?
Yeah, sometimes.
Do we wait?
It's rare, but they, they are kids who've taken Algebra II. Um, it, it depends on where they are in the continuum. Some kids had Algebra I earlier, and so then they are ready for Algebra II and they'll take it at the high school.
Yeah, we had a couple, we had a couple kids, two or three last year that went with a para over to the high school to take it.
One of the selling points, one of many selling points of a single middle school, I recall Dr. Panier saying, well, in Cutler, for example, you may have a sufficient number of kids to justify an Algebra II class. Westside, you may not. And so they don't get that unless they're shipped across town. But if you had one middle school, you're more likely to have a class size that justifies having structured for that. So I saw the reference to Algebra II, and I'm just curious to whether we actually are offering Algebra II in middle school.
At the end of this, we will be.
Promise, promise.
I'm, I'm optimistic. I really am.
Having a campus like this, Dean, even opens it up wider.
So Dean?
Dean, when, um, when I was a principal at Big Middle and yet at Cutler, we had at least three kids who were, who were ready for Algebra II. And we applied with a, a teacher who, who could be released at that time when she gave them Algebra II.
Okay.
It's not usually a huge group of kids.
No.
Because sometimes when we, they rush to that, they've missed the middle school math, which is really personal finance. So they can't miss middle school math. Or they'll be worrying about proportions in Algebra II.
Well, that wasn't bad.
Any further questions? All right.
That's what, I mean, lots of science notebooks.
That's you?
All right. I'll just say before I get started, I have a daughter who's.
I just wanna, um, for those of you who are on Zoom, we are, oh, we are, have not been hearing you. Beth, actually, could you say something? Cause we just turned up the TV speaker.
Hello.
You are like a voice from God. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Am I good to go?
You're good to go.
I was gonna say, real quick, I was telling Kathy before, I have a daughter who's an eighth grader at GMS. And Saturday morning, she came down, right after she woke up, and she's like, Dad, I did math last night. And she handed me this paper with numbers and symbols all over it. And I was like, oh, I bet it's from Kathy's. So, so those strategies, they're keeping kids up all night.
To be that interested in it, that excited about it, that you wanna solve it, you know?
That was fantastic.
Cool.
Um, yeah, so I facilitated um, a book group uh, this summer called Science Notebooks, um, in student-centered classrooms. Uh, we had thirteen, fourteen, fourteen participants uh, that joined us. Um, the book was chosen by our um, elementary science task force that meets multiple times throughout the year. Um, and it's a great resource because there are a number of research-based strategies that we implement, that we try to coach on, that we embed in curriculum, um, that are designed to improve science achievement. Whether it's using phenomena um, to engage students, whether it's um, having kids create models, whether it's having kids engage in student discourse or making claims and evidence. Those are just some of those like high impact strategies. But no matter which one you're using, science notebooking can kind of be the foundation um, for, for all of those. So that was one of the reasons why the group uh, chose this book in the summer. We did a combination of in-person and Zoom. Um, and this was put out to um, kindergarten through fifth grade. But much like your group, Kathy, we had secondary people that saw the posting and wanted to join. So we had a middle school teacher and we had a high school teacher. Um, and with our elementary group, we had kindergarten. So we really had this, this group of thirteen, like a nice cross-section kindergarten and high school, which was great. Um, our second session, which was on Zoom, we were also um, lucky enough to have the author of the book join us. Um, and did a live Q and A for our group, um, which was, which was great. She did that free of charge and um, was happy to connect with our group. And, and I think she enjoyed the conversation just as much as we did.
And they, they were really giving her specific examples of what they learned from her. And they're so appreciative of the way she laid it out so concretely for them.
Yeah. And even offered up, you know, she, she does some consulting and, and maybe that's something we'll, we'll look at down the line, um, to continue this work. Um, the other really neat thing about this book and, and some of the feedback afterwards from teachers was, it was a good mix of concepts, kind of some, some little nudges in thinking. But it was also a really practical book, which I think teachers really appreciated. So full of, you know, checklists and some neat little or organizational elements that teachers could use uh, in their classrooms. Um, so teachers felt at the end that it was something that was. Um, so teachers felt at the end that it was something that was, that was actionable, uh, and that was great. My next, next slide. Um, some of the key takeaways um, after the group, it really kind of reminded us and, and nudged us again that our science classrooms at elementary, but really all through K twelve, should be student-centered. Uh, that means we're looking at an emphasis on concepts, uh, conceptual understanding. Um, we're looking at students talking, looking at that discourse. We're looking at student choice, um, and students being able to use their voice in decision-making. So that was one of the big, the big nudges and it kind of reminders them off the way from. And the other one, one of the other ones was something that the author called A B C C B V, um, which means activity before concept and then concept before vocabulary. Um, so just to make that, you know, that vocabulary that we learn in the content areas even more sticky. So an example of that might be doing an experiment where you're attempting to weigh air in the classroom or investigate if air had weight. And you do that activity and students discover that in fact, air does have a weight, which comes as a huge surprise to a lot of elementary students. Um, but it's only after that activity that you kind of introduce the idea to that um, there's particles in the world that are too small to be seen. Right? And then now that you've introduced that concept, based on that activity, you can start to introduce vocabulary like the term matter. And now have, now kids have not only an experience and a concept to kind of add that, that vocabulary piece to.
Make it more meaningful.
To make it more meaningful and to make it stick.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was a, that was another um, key takeaway from our book. Um, the other one, um, which really dovetails nicely with the work that Lisa's doing is that science notebooking um, supports literacy development. At the elementary level, that, that really is the, the, the name of the game.
Yeah.
So, and it, it goes both ways. So the author provided a great list of texts that teachers can use to launch science notebooks, a lot of like really cool picture book biographies of scientists and engineers that use science notebooks. Um, but also using science notebooks to be able to write in the content area, especially in the areas like maybe. So.
There was definitely this thread in all three book talks. There was the enthusiasm of the teacher, the new learning, but definitely having it student-based learning. And really, there was choice and voice and, you know, wonderful skill development for kids. So some of the basics too, basic tools they need.
Oh, super.
Okay.
Yeah.
I wanna hear it.
Yeah. Um, and I'll just.
They're all using it, I think. That's the beauty is that, that we really lit a fire. Teachers are all using what they learned from these book talks and then the development of this in the curriculum.
And we hope.
Development of lessons.
And we're hoping it's gonna build capacity because we have twenty-two teachers that are using it. But now there's people across the hall that go, hmm.
I wanna do that too.
Yeah, yeah, and they're jumping in on it too.
Right, right. And I'm gonna speak to that point too. Yeah, the, the people that walked away from the book group, um, we've got, heard from the department chair at the high school that they're sharing, that's going on at the high school level. I know Sue talked to the whole science group about what she had learned, um, on those professional learning days before school started. Uh, at least one of the elementary schools did a science notebook launch, a faculty meeting. So even though we were a small um, group of thirteen, it was a mighty group of thirteen.
Did you have a question?
I do.
Absolutely. Are, are there gonna be more of these book, book talks?
That's, I, I think that's the plan and.
Sure.
Um, you know.
Can we access as core members, can we join them?
I, I don't see why not.
Yeah, I think the, the one that we rolled out in literacy, because it was the first time that we had really launched it and it was really new to them, that it was really full too, so it was hard to do it on Zoom. Um, but I would say that you could certainly, and certainly have the book too, and get you involved in that. I think you did get the book on the um, shifting the balance, right? Did you get that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Yeah. So yeah, so if you are interested in any of these topics, let us know.
Let me go to the next slide and I'll wrap up with my last couple ideas here. So just in the way of next steps, um, a lot of teachers, you know, a- after our book, our book talk group, um, developed science notebook launch lessons. Um, the author of the book we read also wrote a great picture book called Notable Notebooks, which is a collection of kind of short stories about scientists and their notebooks. She even had that book um, read on the International Space Station and shared, you know, that link with us. I know a couple of teachers that used that video, uh, an astronaut reading her book about notebooks, a lot of use of notebooks. That's pretty cool.
That is so cool.
Yeah, um, and then we're looking at this year, um, coaching support, um, especially targeted grades four and five. Um, certainly other grade levels as well, but are doing some embedded coaching uh, to make sure that science notebooks are being used and they use effectively, supporting, supporting best practices in science. It was great that we were able to keep science on the forefront. That's one of the, one of the, the, the key takeaways for me is that I wanna continue to show teachers that science is important, um, that it has a place and to build that, that skill set in science and the current areas.
And none of this is easy peasy when it comes to S P A C or S A T or N G S S. Those tests are really rigorous and, you know, it's really, we have to prepare them for that. Not that that's all the, you know, that we have to do, but we also want them to love what they're doing. And I'm running down and saying, this is how I solved math problems. This is what I learned in science and this is what I'm reading and I can read it. I, yeah, I am. Any further questions for our um, our guests? Yeah.
I just have one question.
Yeah, absolutely.
What, so we have math, science, and language or reading. What are we doing for social studies in the lower levels?
Coming, coming soon.
Coming.
Yeah, Lisa is really doing the literacy launch first, but she's gonna definitely integrate the social studies and make sure that we're in tune. The state's actually rolling out a new plan. We haven't seen it yet. We're looking forward to seeing it.
Middle and high school are, are concentrating on nonfiction reading also.
Right.
And that they're really focusing on social studies for that.
Right.
And science, yeah.
We need to do more of that integration like we used to, Bev, cause it's hard to get it all in in silos.
Yeah.
Especially at the elementary.
I, I think you, I.
Aren't you excited?
This is ju, this is just one of the, I mean, I'm not an educator by trade. Um, but I just, the energy that you are, that I, you can steal off of you guys and, and you can tell that it's moved on to the teachers is just really, um, so really on behalf of the district and really behalf of the families of Baton, thank you so much for um, sharing your talent and craft. I, I mean that sincerely, like your excitement about what you're doing and how you're doing it is palpable and it's beautiful. Thank you.
It was just, we'll let you hit the road though.
Yeah.
To get back to your family.
I would prefer you not to hit the road if you would just use the vehicle.
Go in your car and leave.
That would make a lot more sense. I'm a concrete thinker. It was, it was a pleasure to meet you.
I can fill, fill you in on this stuff, Bill, on the last two, if you wanna hit the road too, cause you've had long days. It was a very long day for him today.
Yeah, we heard.
Yeah. All right, so we are gonna just move on to um, the, we have, we passed this out in the spring and in the summer, not that we passed out. We have given these two sheets, the referral tracking, um, and the meeting template. Um. And um, so I think Joyce, Susan, and I spent some time in early spring really sprucing up the templates. Um, and that was then sent out to you all. This is another revision because Su- as Susan and I were thinking about it, actually as of last week, we realized there was a couple of things that we needed to change just because of when the data was getting to us. I then also, I believe I also asked for the chairs of the different um, uh, committees to uh, evaluate the um, the um, the tr- the tracking sheet to make sure that um, what is on there is correct. And so um, I just wanted to make sure that people got that, they see it. Um, and um, and the other thing we did is if it were on the tracker, but it's something we need to continuously look at different times of the year, we put it on the template and took it off the tracker, cause it was something that needed to be, and I was really.
That's why, like the committee of the whole looks like it's really small. But the reason is, is that there were so many of the items that were on the committee of the whole that absolutely needed to be on the template, because we needed to make sure that it wasn't just a one and done, that it was a, all the time. So um, that, that has that. Um, and we were gonna have a couple of more things that we're gonna be, that we're gonna be on today, but we had some staffing stuff. Is that true and that we're gonna be moving it to next week's?
Well, we felt it was a pretty full agenda. I wanted them to, cause they're really talking to you about book clubs and professional learning, but also kind of the, the upgrades in the curriculum too and the instruction. So I wanted you to have time to really look at that.
Yeah. So. So, and if there's anything from financing facilities that you want to throw on for to next week's committee of the whole, because it is gonna, we are trying to go back to the, the first committee of the whole is curriculum. The second is gonna be financing facilities, knowing that things are gonna happen. Um, so if you have stuff that you think that the board needs to know specifically, if they're gonna be going towards on a vote at the regular board meeting, let's, let, just send that to me and I'll throw that on.
I also think that um, we were looking at um, curriculum, the curriculum meeting, and Bill wanted to share some of those updates with you all first and then bring it to the C O W. So that shifted, that was it.
Okay.
That we wanted to make sure we were doing it.
Yeah, so that makes sense.
Yeah. And then um, as I typically do, give the district overview of all these assessments, S P A C, S A T, and N G S S. We're waiting for the, you know, magic wand that it's, you know, ready for, to hit the press. And, you know, they used the word embargoed again, although they've used it sometimes and not others. So it's still embargoed and as soon as it's released, my hope is by the end of the month, I've already started planning, sharing that with you, to have it way in advance. So. Um.
So just be prepared that we would take a regular board meeting and she would give the balcony view of this is sort of what the district looks like. And then we are going to, because one of the things that we talked about last year was that we would love to see more staff, more teachers, more people who are jo, uh, who are, who, uh, they're in the trenches. And then our fir, our committee of the whole meeting would really be them coming in and talking about what the plan of action is for them. And along with that time, cause many of us asked for that multi-layered tiered intervention.
So that will be part of their action plan.
Their action plans, that they will talk about it, because we wanted to have more information on that.
So we thought secondary, um, first, and then the elementaries, cause there's, you know, more of the elementaries. To show you their data individually.
Any questions about the referral? Um, Jay, you said that there was one that you thought that we could remove from the tracking sheet?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, all right.
That'd be great. And our business manager came today, Dave Flag, and he's awesome. He's gone off, running start. Ian, Lori are meeting. Ken is gonna meet with him this week. And um, you know, he got a head start by doing the task on looking at our last three years and giving us some good advice. What do you would think? So he really had studied us a little bit before coming.
And Ken is, Ken is now working.
In Ledger.
Is working at Ledger.
He didn't like it there and I guess he got a call from the Ledger superintendent to come there.
So he's, he's at Ledger. So I will, Bev?
Thank you, Ken. Um, Susan, you, we just have professional development for the teachers, is that correct, at the beginning of the school year?
Yes, we did.
Did you do a survey on how they like that professional development?
Yes, we did, yeah.
Can you, can you forward that to us?
Yep, I can. Um, I actually had said that should be a good board note too, to kind of explain what was going on and what the results were. I mean, one of the big rollouts was this phonics that you heard, actually it was K five literacy. So we had three through five, looking at, you know, the area of reading and writing to learn. And we had the K through three looking at the phonics piece. So that really captured most of their time and a little math on the side, I think. We are interviewing first round.
Okay, so this is not on our agenda?
Okay, sorry.
Right. All right.
Can I just, I wanna actually speak about the um, tracking or the ongoing review of English, like, of li, language and arts. And I know it's been on there since nineteen eighteen, but I'm sorry.
Nineteen eighteen.
Maybe from nineteen eighteen. At any rate, um, and it's ongoing. And now that I, I've heard from Lisa, I really want to keep it on there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
That, that. Yeah.
Through their writing and spelling, we can tell how they're reading.
That's true.
So that's the big takeaway.
Yep.
Oh, motion to adjourn.
Have a second?
Oh, no.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose. Uh, Beverly, by the way, nice, good question. Thank you very much, everyone. Bye, everyone. Bye.